Welcome to the June 2 meeting of the Board of Regional Commissioners for Barnstable County. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Sometimes you have a moment of silence for servicemen, but I'd also add the name of Nancy Caffin. I served on the Assembly and she should be well-known to folks.
Yes, I remember her well.
Because she had been involved in a lot of public service and had been a long-serving selectman, a member of the Barnstable County Assembly and also a state representative who passed. And I had seen her son within the last month or so at some event, so she will be missed. She was somebody that made a significant contribution to the life here on the Cape through the public service.
Okay, so we'll take a moment of silence to remember Nancy Caffin and all of our troops, both abroad and at home. Nancy was president of the Cape Selectments Association. She actually started when Ed Tagg was the State Rap way back when we used to meet at the Union Restaurant over in Yarmouth.
Was she from Ashby?
Yes. She's the one that got me thinking outside of Falmouth when I was first to select me. And that's how I got very involved with the county and you see all of that because she had that gloop up and going. She was very active then. And then she ran for State Rap.
Yeah, she was successful.
So I didn't realize, I didn't even know she was ill. But she wasn't living here on the Cape, was she? I thought she had moved away.
I know she was originally from Connecticut.
Yes, she was a first selectman or something in, you know how they call them the first selectmen? Meaning they're the ones in charge for the year or something like that. Okay, well, we don't have anyone coming in today.
No.
Either to report or to comment.
No.
So we can start with our business and then move on to reports.
I'll move the Assembly's items.
Yes, I will second that.
I have a couple of questions on number 15, the bid for the transportation of municipal solid waste for the towns of Brewster, Dennis, Eastham, Orleans, Provincetown. How does that work? Is that something they've always done or is this new that they're doing it in combination?
I believe they've done this for a while. Combination, I think they've been doing that for a while and we kind of coordinate the bid as a third-party administrator.
And then the new fund for the Mass Department of Agriculture, CMAC, where is it?
Give me a number.
Oh, a number 18.
Number 18, oh, I don't have a 18, that's why I don't have it.
Those are additional items after the deadline.
Yeah, I have my old one.
Well, CMAC is southeastern, was it southeastern Massachusetts Agricultural?
Commission?
Commission.
Could be.
Well, we should have it on the.
It'll be on the end, yeah.
Oh, so it must have something to do with the establish a new fund for the Buy Fresh Buy Local Cape License Grant?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know what that one is. It just got added.
Should probably be in the end.
Yeah, a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, about four to five.
Yeah, I only have 17.
These were added at the very end.
Slipping them in.
Yeah. South Aquaculture Center.
Yeah.
From, that's what it is.
Why are they setting up a new fund though? Because I'm not sure.
I'd like to request authorization to establish a new fund. It doesn't say.
I can find out.
And then the Buy Fresh Buy Local.
Yeah, that I know that we give out grants for monies that we get to local farms and whatever. But the CMAC one, I'm not quite clear on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? We in favor, none opposed, motion carries. Okay. Phil, do you want to start with a report? Anything that you might have been included in in the last week?
I was invited and with great pleasure addressed the Massachusetts Society of Professional Engineers on the problems of politics and engineering last Thursday night.
That's right up your alley.
Oh, yeah, it was great fun. It was great fun. You know, the biggest problem that I told them is that when they deal with the public sector, you know, dealing with public money has a different type of context than dealing with, you know, private sector money, that there are many hoops to go through and that they have to be clear on both what they're offering and what they're being asked to do. Because that always seems to be a sticking point with, you know, public, there's always the assumption to sort of maneuver. There's no room for maneuver when money is appropriated for a specific purpose. So anyway, it was interesting to do that and. We, oh, I went to the Harwich Veterans Memorial on the 31st. It was very well done. It was very low-key, you know, the Boy Scouts. But the most important thing was how many of the people at Harwich had turned out to honor our veterans. And there were many, there were many veterans there. We're all getting older, but we're still showing up, so it's a good thing.
I think what I've seen, at least in Falmouth, because it's been going on for so many years, that each year it increases to, this Monday, there were over 1,000 people there, which is amazing. I mean, 1,000, I couldn't believe how many people were there.
And I went to Yarmouth.
Oh, you went to the.
Because I had heard on the radio that morning Steven Zarros was going to be giving the keynote for that and he was interviewed on NPR, I guess, saying that, you know, he had attended many times, but now because of his son.
Who was this?
He was the Lieutenant Zarros in Yarmouth. His son Nicholas was killed last July, I believe. And that was also a very big turnout, but what they had done is they asked, they said many of the veterans are here and they talked about, you know, how many had died, you know, nationwide and even in the area in that last year. And they said, okay, all the, you know, Air Force and all of, anybody that was in the audience that served got up and it was really an amazing sight to see these guys, you know, they were. And then Zarros spoke and he said, and last night, we had a surprise visit. He talked about his son getting killed and he really, the wife couldn't stay, actually. But the details of it and how somebody were killed in that fire, they went over a mine and one survived but also saved the son and he lived for like three hours and succumbed. And on their doorstep that night, that Marine and three other guys came to the door. So he brought them up. And to see the young guys, he looked at all these guys and he said, this is what they look like, you know, all cocksure themselves. And, but two of them had lost their legs, I mean, but they were still active.
They showed one of the pictures of their kid.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, it was really pretty amazing and it was very emotional. I mean, all of, that always gets me anyway because, you know, people then appreciated the sacrifice, but today the sacrifice is really almost like behind closed doors for some people. It's like we know it's there and it's being paid for over there and the sacrifice is being done either through monetarily funds through us and, but by the real loss and anxiety of these families. And, you know, we kind of go merrily along our way because it really doesn't have that direct impact and.
Sure, the disconnect is because it's a volunteer force.
Yes.
When we had a draft, there'd be more people, you know, more people concerned about it. There was a great article in Harper's.
And there's a reason why there's not a draft.
Well, there's a reason for that. But in Harper's, it specifically addressed that issue that if during the anti-war movement, the interest in that had to do with where your draft number was.
Absolutely.
And when your draft, if you're, once your draft number was high enough, you lost interest in becoming an activist. Before that time, the people that were identified as being eligible for service were very concerned about it. And, you know, of course, after I got out of that duty, I commanded a reserve company over at the Army Base and all of the kids that were in there were all, they were all from BU, I think they all were taking courses with Zin or somebody. And their buddies would come, you know, to the gate and we'd go through a drill, you know, for the nightly news. And after the drill was over, you know, they went from school together, so they would just basically chat with one another. So, but the point was that as long as there was a fear that you'd be called, people were involved and concerned. When that goes away and it's being a volunteer force, there's less connection.
Absolutely. And I don't think it's done by accident, number one, but the other thing is, you know, in World War II, there was, it was a traditional war and it was a clear enemy aggression and overtake. I mean, it was sort of a traditionally clear war.
Nevertheless, we didn't get involved in that war until Japan attacked us.
Yes, I know, I know. And, but today, you know, since then, our motives are always skewed, or they appear, you know, I mean, is this really worth the life of my kid or my life? And, you know, it's not as clear where people signed up to go, you know, en masse during World War II because that was their duty.
Well, we were told that the.
Digressing.
Yeah, we are, I know. I think we.
Get back to our business.
But I agree.
We could have this discussion.
That would shut the door off.
I absolutely agree, Pat. I agree, I believe with that.
Okay, so you were in Yarmouth, I was in Falmouth and you were at Harwich.
Yeah, so.
That's great. I just read in the paper today where Victoria Reggie Kennedy is speaking at the Harwich High School graduation.
Yes, she is.
Because all of the officers of the class happened to be young ladies who made a pitch to her that she couldn't resist, which is pretty good. Hooray for them.
And since I have a granddaughter that's going to be president of her eighth grade and, you know, I can understand the importance of supporting women as they develop, you know, develop across this, I think Vicki will do a great job.
Oh, I think she will too, yeah. She apparently has done a number of graduations. Mark, what do you have for us today?
I have actually three things. First of all, I need a vote from you and I need you to vote to approve a 2% call for FYI 2011 for Ruth Koppelman. Ruth Koppelman is one of our non-contrib retirement beneficiaries. She's the widow of former judge and of course judges never paid into the system long ago, so we pay her directly. It's included in our budget and the 2% call for her is included in the budget.
Okay, this is a traditional.
Yeah, I need it for the state, basically.
Okay, I will move that, or second it.
Second.
Excuse me, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries.
And I need you to sign off on a amendment to our conservation restriction over at the Barnstable County Hospital property. As you remember, the people who are running the thrift shop over there want to do a community farm. So they're working on the pieces to that. One of the pieces to that is we need to amend the conservation restriction, Section 11 to read as follows. Animal husbandry is prohibited. Gardening and other agriculture uses are also prohibited except in the area designated on Exhibit A Sketch Plan subjects to an Eastern Box Turtle Protection Plan approved by the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. So this section is where they will be doing their community farm. So I need you to sign aye. I don't have any issues with that. So you would sign there.
Give me a second.
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Terrific.
Aye, opposed? None opposed? We in favor, motion carries.
Chicken over.
No, they can't do chickens. No animal husbandry.
No, no animal husbandry.
Can't do that. They can only garden.
Are you signing both places or just?
No, just on that. Just there. And then the final thing is I need you to execute the interim loan notes and the interim loan certificates for the $3 million borrowing from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust for the Septic Batterment Program.
Three million.
This is 3 million?
I thought you said 3 billion.
Might as well be because this is the final $3 million of the second $10 million authorized by the Assembly of Delegates. So once this money has been borrowed and loaned out, that'll be a total of $20 million that we have gone through. And just so you know, for next year, fiscal 2011, we'll be putting together another $10 million borrowing authorization to send over to the Assembly of Delegates, so.
Do we need a motion on this?
No, you just need to execute those documents in all of the appropriate places. So there's the, that's the loan note amendment certificates and so we'll be doing that. So those are the three things I needed you to do. And then just FYI, we got a nice letter, it's addressed to Margaret Meanan-Brooks, Kids and Teens Assessment Center, and says, Dear Peggy, I write to thank you for your past service to the Advisory Board of Children's Cove, which Children's Cove will greatly miss you, your presence and your considerable contributions to the efforts of our board. And this is signed Brian Glenny, Chairman of the Cove Advisory Board. So that was to Margaret Meanan-Brooks. Today at 3 o'clock, the Assembly is holding their CMed ordinance in a public hearing, so.
Can I ask what it is? How can they get word to?
Well, with where it is?
Yeah.
Well, I spoke to the Senate President's Office today and unfortunately Michaela from Robert Larry's office was on vacation, so we couldn't talk to her. And what they're waiting for is for this ordinance to go through because this gives the structure for a funding operation to go forward. And so I think once we have this, then if the Assembly, now today is only the hearing, right?
Today's the hearing, the vote will be the next meeting.
So the vote comes the following week. So after next week.
Two weeks.
Oh, in two weeks.
Yeah, because this is the Assembly.
Yeah, because after they voted, then we'll have a meeting, probably in Boston. I doubt that it'll be here. And then to try to put together and see where we're going to go from here, what, if we get any kind of a signal today that they're really favorably inclined toward this, which we may know.
Right.
I don't know if anyone's going to show up.
In the Cape Cod Times today, Richard Anderson said that he anticipated that, he didn't anticipate any issues in the piece, that they probably would vote it full. The, you know, the only issue which we've talked about is the, you know, the funding.
It's the funding, that's the whole issue.
Because if we are, if we're going to take responsibility for funding, we have to find the money someplace.
Well, now, we're hoping that this.
I think the structure gives the, perhaps the state an opportunity to find some funding. I would say there's another wild card that's out there that I'd add to that and I don't know for a fact that this will work for specifically the CMed piece, but in, I believe it's the Senate version of the municipal relief package, it was only in one version, wasn't in the other, and I'm not sure whether it was the Senate or the House version, there was language that allowed a community to bill the insurance for the ambulance service. So that's kind of a key component and it may allow there an imposition of a CMed charge. I don't know that for a fact, but at least that there's that potential opening of the door for that, so.
I knew that there had been something like that and I wasn't sure where it was, so it's in the municipal relief.
Yeah, it was in one side's version and now, so whether it makes it out of conference, who knows?
Well, I said that I would call the Senate President's Office today after the public hearing to give them some indication of what happened. And I'll mention that to them, that we need to follow up on that and see where it is and maybe help to marshal it through the process at the State House. Because that would be, that's the key to the whole thing of making it work and that's the best way to do it, is to do it through a billing. In the same sense, or in the same manner, that the towns bill Medicare. I mean, the fires departments each individually bill Medicare for the ambulance services they provide. So it really makes sense. So that's where it stands.
So that's where we are with the CMed thing today. I did get a call from Chief Russell. He said he could not make the meeting today. I didn't get a chance to talk to him, but I don't think that's an issue.
No.
It's Chief Russell's person.
George.
George.
He's the chief in St. Louis.
He's the chief in St. Louis. I believe he will be the appointee to the CMed thing. He's the, I believe he's the Chair of the Fire Chiefs Association. And we know who the person is, whose name escapes me, from Cape Cod Healthcare. I spoke with him.
Van Frost?
No.
No.
It's not Van.
I want to say Michael.
The finance.
Yes.
Yeah, it's Michael. You remember.
Yes, I do. I was at the meeting.
I apologize for forgetting his name.
Me too. He was at that meeting we had at the base.
So hopefully kind of appointing these people to the thing once it's, and assume that it gets passed, won't take too long, we'll be able to pull together a meeting.
You know, I mentioned that when Lieutenant Governor was in Falmouth with his municipal cabinet a couple of weeks ago, that he mentioned that in his opening statement about, but he was referring mostly to the fact that other states only had three dispatch districts and we have like, what, I don't know, 28 or something, or more than that. And so I spoke about the whole CMed thing and said that we were working on it and this is what we were hoping to do, that we would utilize the sheriff's dispatch services, which are really state of the art.
That's how you quoted it anyway.
Huh?
That's how you quoted in the paper.
Oh, last time around or today?
Today.
Today, yeah. So anyway, so that's where we are and I think once the Assembly gets moving and we have a structure in place, then that lends it more credibility for funding.
And then shortly thereafter, that meeting at 3:45, they're having their public hearing on our dredge supplemental ordinance for $21,450 for salaries for the dredge, so.
And that comes out of the enterprise fund?
Yeah, that'll come out of their additional programs.
How did the accident sort of work out? That's been resolved, has it not? I mean, I know, I don't know if you can talk about it in too much detail, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that we will get an insurance claim. I haven't seen any of the paperwork yet and, yeah, it'll go, yeah, we don't get too many claims, thank goodness, on our dredge, so that, yeah, all the pieces are in place to deal with it appropriately, I guess it's not allowed.
How's Open Cape? Where are we there? Has Bob Troy responded?
I guess, I did say for Bob to put that on the top of his agenda. I have not heard and have not followed up myself.
Yes, we need to follow up.
On that?
They waited three weeks, they got no response from him. Now it's another week.
Yeah, and now it should be, well, they could be working on it because I haven't heard from either side.
Okay.
So I'm sure they're working on it. I think Bob was just waiting for kind of the go-ahead. He's usually reluctant to return phone calls when he doesn't know, you know, what he's getting calls about, so.
Didn't we make an agreement with him that we put our request in writing for what we specifically wanted from him?
Well, this was. No, not, no, no, that's not the case.
Maybe that's from the Assembly, we're asking for things.
I think Bob, you know, if he gets calls on our behalf from someone who's not associated with the county, he's like, well, I don't know what they want. So he has to be a little bit cautious. He's our lawyer, not somebody else's. So he can't start running up the clock on things that we haven't authorized him to do. So now he's been authorized, I'm sure he'll do whatever needs to be done, so. But I will follow up with it and make sure that.
Which brings up another point. Open Cape is the only CEDS item that has gone to any closure regard to the SEDS plan and I think it's time for Paul to have to report on what.
He did. Couple of weeks ago, they had the annual meeting of the SEDS report. It was at the rehab hostel in Cape Cod?
What about, isn't he supposed to come in here and talk to us?
Oh, he can.
Well, actually, that's what I just handed out, so we're jumping in a little bit. We talked about the schedule a couple of weeks ago, so I, you know, put together what I had on it based on our discussions. I do have Open Cape on there with a question mark because, you know, I thought we wanted to get them in, but maybe there's some other things that I can start listing out that you want.
Yeah, I think Open Cape would be good to.
An update on SEDS.
I bring this up because we had talked about having, you know, Paul come in here on a regular basis to report on, you know, on the Cape Cod Commission. I know that, you know, that Patty Bailey had come in.
Right.
But I think it's important to see, you know, to receive him because that's all part of what we talked, what had been presented to us as far as how we were supposed to stay in contact with him.
So, okay, well, I'll put on, for the commission.
Yeah, no, that's not.
Update on the SEDS, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
And I would also think an update on the local, the technical assistance money because there was, we had a lot of balls in the air.
DOTS.
Yeah, the local technical assistance funding.
And by the way, we did, Paul did come and do a program with me, you know, that's not, doesn't have the same audience that our meetings do.
Well, no, that's true. But he did have that annual meeting of the SEDS group, the where he gave a poll before the Senate President was there.
But that didn't go out to anybody though.
Yeah, it went to all the focus groups, all the focus groups and people were invited to come.
But I mean, did they, did it go on tape or?
No, but reporters were there and the Senate President was there.
Were they ever reluctant to, you know, dare to do that?
No, I have no reluctance. They're reluctant to have them come in. No, no, it's fine.
You know, we have these meetings and we take, we ought to have some contact.
Bill, on the Open Cape one, I would mention in the most recent, it's that County Journal that NAGO does, on the front cover is the Department of Agriculture is doing grants for high-speed internet access that are eligible to rural areas and most of Cape Cod has been designated, is a rural area because we know this from our wind turbine discussions with RUS. Should we follow up and see if we can get any money that might be associated?
Oh, I would think we should. I would mention to you that that designation's rural and urban depends upon whom you're talking to because with the RTA, there are only three towns, let's see, Truro, Eastham and, I should, Truro, Welfley and Provincetown.
Well, RUS is a division of the Department of Agriculture and we know that Barnstable and a section of Yarmouth are not rural. Everything else is rural by their definition, which means.
Thank you for that because then we should pursue it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
All right, we'll do that then, we'll stick with the follow-up on that. It's ARR money.
Let me know what's.
That would help us with our.
It can't hurt, you know.
Right, I agree.
Exactly. If we can come up with some other funding to help supplement the 40 million.
With our project here in-house that we're revamping.
In-house or through Open Cape or for whatever, so.
Right. Well, you should call Dan about that too.
That's what I would, yeah. Yeah, when I talk to him about the follow-up with the lawyers.
Yeah, that's available if that.
Well, let me just go over the, so next week, we'll have an update from Kendall on the Septic Batterment Program and I'll ask John Morris come in and just show us how to use the shared calendar. We'll set something up here.
Oh, good.
On June 16th, it won't be Darlene, but she will have the AmeriCorps people come in, give you an update on the AmeriCorps program.
Wonder from news, $326,000.
I saw that, I saw the whole list from Senator Carey's office of all the monies that are awarded. It's the 6.8 millions to City Year. You know what, funny because I was looking at, wow, I said, that's a lot of money. I wonder what the per-head amount is. It's 13,000, just like ours.
Well, the per-head amount for the, because the US Marshals on airplanes is $200 million per arrest. They've arrested four people.
Yeah, well, but this was the AmeriCorps, I was looking at the AmeriCorps thing, so. Yes, they did get their award of that, $338,000, so that's good. And then June 23rd, I put a question mark on that, but Open Cape was on our list and then we said, June 30th, no meeting. July 7th, I have open, but that's an Assembly meeting day, so I don't have anything scheduled for that, but maybe we can get Paul to come in and talk about.
Well, remember, that's right after the Fourth of July weekend. It's like this week, so many people are on vacation this week. Maybe we could try for the 14th.
Okay, we can do that.
Did have Paul.
Commission update.
Yeah.
Okay, so can, I hate to do this, I'm sorry, can we just go, what time will our meeting be on the 9th?
Oh, we haven't set the time yet.
We haven't set the time yet. We can do whatever. There's no Assembly that day, so we can do whatever you want.
Maybe I didn't, sorry. Maybe I didn't, sorry. That's what I... Well, you haven't set times yet.
No.
Okay, because I have a, a meeting early in the morning.
Which day?
It's, it's on the 9th.
The 9th of June?
Yep, a week from today.
That is not an assembly day.
It's not an assembly day, which is, sometimes you could lend ourselves to be early. But I am going to be probably, it starts at 8:00. Personal stuff, so it starts at 8:00, probably goes to about 11:00.
So, you want to start at noon?
That's, that's fine.
It's fine with us, so...
I'm just saying in the morning, I...
To me, we're open, we can do whatever we want.
Sure.
Okay.
Want to say something much earlier?
Noon start, okay. And the 16th is an assembly meeting, June 16th, so we can do that in the afternoon if you want.
Let me just get back to June 9th here.
So, June 9th, we're going to meet at noon?
Let's see, maybe, uh...
And, uh, let's see.
June 9th. Oh, yeah, I can do that. June 9th will be at noon, okay?
Let's see, on the 16th, we're, that's a...
That's an assembly meeting.
... assembly meeting in the afternoon.
Probably meet around 1:00 or 1:30, somewhere around there.
I don't think they have anything, so, yeah, well, yeah. Uh, 1:30, let's say 1:30.
On the 9th?
On the 16th.
On the 16th.
Noon on the 9th.
Got to give you plenty of time.
And then, on the 23rd?
That's not an assembly meeting, so...
That's right, so...
We can, we don't have to set the time.
No, we don't have to set the time now. And the 30th, no meeting. And the 7th, we can...
7th, maybe we just do a shorter meeting and just do signing and stuff like that.
1:30?
They are a meeting on the assembly day, on that day, so...
Well, tentatively, schedule it for 1:30. And then, the 14th is still, it will be questionable, because the Assembly won't be meeting.
Okay. Then, on the 21st, there is an assembly meeting. We would like to do, I tried to get that for the 14th, but Maggie's not available. But we'd like to put together a CDEX or TV sites tour. Probably do a Booster, maybe a Harwich site, maybe one other. We won't do them all, but maybe we can cover three.
We'd have to have some, would Maggie be able to coordinate with the school? Because I don't think the school is open right now.
Oh, well, but we'll be doing something, yeah. We're going to try to do some kind of grand amount, bussin'. So, so let's tentatively schedule for July 21st.
Okay.
And that would be off-site, and then we'll come back and do the assembly meeting. Don't have anything for July 28th at this point in time. Nor August 4th. Then, on August 11th, I mentioned for Bill to put together the Cooperative Extension Tour. And we have not done the Upper Cape this year, so he was thinking about Thalma.
Oh, yeah.
And one of the things he thought might be helpful, because it's hard during the day to get from here to Thalma, is maybe we start the meeting in Thalma, either Highfield Hall or somewhere, and then conduct the tour from there. And then, he thought we might end up at Kuna Masset Farm and do a bi-fresh, bi-local...
I love Kuna Masset Farms, one of my favorite places.
Yeah.
So, that's a little plan for that.
That sounds like a lot of fun. By the way, we've invited members of the public on this tour.
We have, yeah.
And I'd like to suggest we invite the legal women voters who have attended in the past.
Yeah.
You know, they've seen...
And the Assembly.
And the Assembly, yes.
I think we've only gotten one person from the Assembly.
No, that, no, that's, no. And it depends on the year, I'm trying to remember. Some, my, you know, my memory, it fails me all the time. No, we've had Tom Lynch, not last year, but a couple of years ago, remember?
We had Tom Lynch, yeah.
So, we've had, yeah, we've had some participation from the Assembly.
I seem to think it came from Charlotte.
Charlotte's obviously, Charlotte is usually an attendee, so... It hasn't, yeah, it hasn't been too bad. So, we're working on that.
And by the way, in August is when they have the, the Assembly has a big deal down in...
Now, I'm getting to that. And then, on the 18th, usually they do their gazebo meeting, the second meeting in August. So, what I thought we might do is have the Commissioners' meeting also at the Beach Gazebo. And we'll have the CLC, Kevin Gallagher, will give us an energy efficiency program update.
Well, that'd be great.
So...
So, that's the 18th?
That would be the 18th. And we'd meet at the Nossett Beach Gazebo, say, at like 2:00.
Where is that going to be? It's, um, is it July 18th?
No, I...
It's August 18th.
Yeah, that's usually very fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then after the Assembly, you know, John Holman does his little food thing, so that's good.
His onions?
He does everything.
Onion grease, yeah.
Shrimp and scallops and, you know, he does everything, so...
And the lobster fridge ain't bad either.
Yeah, all that stuff, so... So, now, the start would be around, you know, 2:00, or you don't want to be sitting out, especially if it's hot, too, too long. So, yeah, so we'll move these updates on the LTA funds and the SADS to the 14th. Anything else you can think of, we can fit in there. There are a couple of other things I think we'll be working on, but...
Definitely, that we can fill in there.
Oh, this is great. Thank you very much.
And that's all I have.
And will this fit in with the, would this meet the letter, if not the spirit, of the changes in the agenda brought on by the open meeting law?
No, that's on my agenda to talk about, too. Because under the new open meeting law, we are required to post an agenda that explains a little bit more about what the agenda item is. You can't just list something like, "Report from housing." It has to have a little substance to it to describe what it actually means. Like last week, when we had Paul machine us here.
And by the way, I think he gave us some follow-up with that, at least it was in my packet.
Okay. And so, we need to do that. And the other thing is, you also have to put on the, reasonably put on the agenda, everything that you are reasonably know you're going to talk about. So, we can't just bring things up. I mean, if you, reports are different. You know, if you've been somewhere, if we want to report on activities of the week, that's one thing. But if there's a specific agenda item, I mean, if there's a specific item that we want to discuss, such as, suppose, like today, we were talking about CMed. You know, we should really have that on the agenda so that people know that we're talking about that. Like, we're having an update on the CMed, what happened. It's going before the Assembly, and we're going to review where we are on the, on the project and what's going to happen at the Assembly. So, it has to be a little more concise.
Right.
But I think we can, we can work on that. We only have to really start in July.
One of the prohibit is probably stuff like, you know, Robin, yesterday, left me a note that says, "Are you going to get a vote from the Commissioners to do the Ruth Koppelman vote?" Probably now, what I won't be able to do is bring that in on a little sticky and remind myself to ask you. I'll have to wait, because we missed the, the posting, so I'll have to go on next week's agenda item.
The Needs Action Folder, we post that, right?
You don't need to post every action that you're doing, no. But this one, you, you know, you kind of discussed, so...
Well, that, then that's troubling, because there, if we ask a question about some item that's on the Needs Action Folder, are you allowed to ask those questions?
Yeah, no, you're allowed to ask questions, of course you are. But you don't need to list every little thing that you're going to...
Or background on it, no, not that. It's more for...
A discussion.
A discussion. Like, if you decided now you wanted to have a discussion on something, you couldn't do it under the new open meeting law, because it would have to be posted. That we're having a discussion about, say, say, the use of the, uh, what do they, what do they call them, the DLSA funds? Say, we wanted to have a discussion about those. We, we couldn't do that under the new open meeting law, the changes.
A good example of, of what we can't do is when Mr. Andre brought up the hazardous waste situation, and we said, "We will have Mike McGuire here next week." Now, we all heard that. He may have heard that. We had Mike McGuire here, and he wasn't here. And I saw him later on, and I said, "How come you weren't there?" Because we were just discussing. And he said, "It wasn't listed on the agenda. I looked." And he was right. So, even though we had known, you know, the three of us, and Pat wasn't at that meeting, that we said that, and he was, he could have called us on that, or he could in the future. I think you can call us right now.
Since I watched the tape, and I clearly heard us say that it was on there, and he was, and he nodded in affirmation.
No, I think after July 1st, you're absolutely right.
But the point of what I'm saying is, that has to be listed on...